Full house and a full agenda, so it is going to be a full evening for us. And we appreciate your presence this evening with us, whatever you're here in regard of. And so we traditionally start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance and then an invocation for our council. Councilman Mark Hopper will lead us in that this evening.
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness to us and we thank you for the opportunity that you've given us to live in a community such as Greer. Thank you for the privilege we have to serve our community. I pray that you'd give us wisdom and justice, humility tonight as we discuss the matter of our city and help us to make decisions that would honor you and best serve our citizens. Lord, we thank you for this season as well. Help us to have hearts of Thanksgiving gratitude even as we look back on this past weekend and forward to the Christmas season ahead. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. We have two folks to appear in public forum this evening. Public forum is a time that we set aside at the beginning of each city council meeting. This time is set aside to allow those that would like to speak to items on the agenda to do so. We only have two this evening. I will just ask that you be respectful of each other's time and of council's time and also that you will identify yourself by name and address when you come to the podium. That way, we will have a clear record of your presentation. So with that, the first person to speak this evening is Emily Kurbuski.
Good evening. I just wanted to speak quickly about Turner Park. I live at 113 Carolina Avenue in Greer, so really just like a block and a half away from Turner Park. So I know the agenda item is about agreeing to the bidder, but this means the project's still relatively early. And currently, as it stands, the park is set to be a U-12 softball field. So that's going to just be serving youth. It's not going to be serving people through their lifespan. It's just going to be focused on kids, which is great. Don't get me wrong. I would just like to see the space going towards something that can be used by people of all ages, not just geared towards children. As a side note, I'd like to see if the council, at some other time, I know not right now, could speak about the talks. I've heard rumors of people of y'all buying East Riverside Park from Greenville County. If that's true, there are two fields at that location with plenty of space to put in a third and possibly a fourth for a softball complex, which I think would be pretty cool for a youth softball complex, to have it all in one space. I'm mostly concerned about Turner Park as far as the neighborhood goes. What are the plans for managing the increased traffic? We have lots of neighbors that walk with their children and their pets. Are there speed tables? I just didn't see that in the plan, and maybe y'all do have a plan for that. Trash and litter, as well as safety of the community members. The plan is also to have a space for food trucks and extra parking. I'm just curious as to why we're not encouraging people to go to our beautiful downtown and enjoy the wonderful food options that we have downtown. Currently, there is a bathroom, but it's locked. So if where people are down using the park, it's only accessible during times in which the baseball is or softball is booked for that upper field. So if we could maybe put in the plan, I know some bathrooms that are owned by, I don't know, county or municipal, are on timing systems, so like during park operating hours they're open. Some way to have restroom facilities that are open and accessible to the public during the day. Excuse me. All right, let's see. In addition to the bathrooms, potentially adding a water bottle filling station or two, a shade structure with picnic tables, a playground, I see is part of the plan, potentially in the words. I haven't seen that on the drawing. And then adding lights that can be rented at a reasonable cost. So if this, it's a larger softball field instead of a youth field, potentially the outfield could be used as a flex space for multiple different sports. There's options for a storage shed. We keep soccer goals, football posts, et cetera, for different options to be used there. It would also be interesting to see a skate park at the top of the hill in the unused space behind the outfield or the current ball field. I know there's, I've heard there's a skate park, actually I haven't seen it, at the other park, why am I blanking? But anyways, the skate park would be an interesting addition. If the field is becoming a softball field, like I said, having it big so everyone can use it would be great. How are we doing on time? I'm sorry. Are we good? Yeah. Okay. The last thing I wanted to speak on is adult rec sports in Greer. Right now, there is adult wood bat baseball and adult men's basketball. There's no sports that are dedicated specifically to women, and there's no field sports. So I don't know how we can work on that or how y'all are pulling interest for that, but I'd love to see some women's sports and some field sports. And I appreciate y'all listening to me this evening, and I look forward to looking, working with y'all in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Potter, Betsy Potter.
My name is Betsy Potter, and I live at 116 West Church Street in Greer. I'm also a member of the Architectural Review Board for the city. I'm here to urge you to adopt historic district overlays for the Greer Mill and Arlington-Davenport Mountain View neighborhoods as designated in the City of Greer Historic Resources Survey conducted in 2017. Greer is experiencing growth unlike any we have seen in decades. The UDO rightly welcomes this new growth and puts boundaries in place so that the growth will enhance our city rather than detract from it. As stewards of the city, with this new growth, we want to preserve the essence of the Greer we know and love. Our history, the story of how we got to where we are today, is an important part of our city that should be preserved for future generations. Historic homes are visual reminders of this story. They require special protection that the UDO currently does not provide. This protection can only be put in place by city council. I am confident that if an appropriate historic district overlay is adopted, the Arlington-Davenport Mountain View neighborhood at least would be much less resistant to new construction. For an example of how such an ordinance may be written, I encourage you to look at the guidelines for the Hampton Heights neighborhood on the City of Spartanburg's website. It includes recommendations for how homeowners can repair their home in a way that preserves its history, as well as basic information on how to help new construction fit in with existing homes. If there isn't time to include the historic overlays before the UDO is adopted, I would encourage you to act now to place it on the agenda for your next planning session and schedule a joint meeting with the bar for future discussion. I look forward to continuing the conversation to include historic overlays in the UDO. Please help save this important part of Greer's story before it disappears. Thank you.
Counsel, let's move to the minutes of the council meeting held on November the 14th, 2023, our last meeting. I'll entertain a motion that those minutes be received.
So moved.
Second. And a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Earwood.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Danner.
Yes.
We have some special recognitions to make this evening in regards to the Civics Academy participants. Several members of our community elected to take our free Greer Civics Academy over the past several weeks. The class takes participants through each of our city divisions on a weekly basis, learning from department heads and their employees about how the city operates. The idea behind the program is to give people living and working in Greer a better idea of how all of the departments work together to make the city run smoothly. Participants visited several of our city facilities and received some hands-on experience along the way. We've got a number of participants that we want to recognize this evening, and I am going to ask Ayla Fitzpatrick, if she would, to join me at the front.
This is indeed an opportunity to do something that you don't generally get to do, and I would urge you to consider participating in our Civics Academy. As a brief description, so yes, it's an opportunity to have a peek behind the curtain at the different departments that we have in the city, how they operate and why they exist, to get a better feel for what they do and how they do it and how they're funded. In addition to that, you'll get to see some of the backside of the public safety and our private department, as well as here in the administration. And so this is a good way for those citizens that may be prepared to do to our community, as well as those that lived here all their lives. And so I would suggest to chit chat out the Greer Civics Academy. We'll be doing these from time to time, and you'll watch some of our social media platforms or websites. You'll know when the next class is coming up. And so we want to recognize some folks this evening, and if you would, if you'll come up, we've got a little certificate for you, and if you'll stay up, we want them to get a picture. So John Doler.
That's right.
Yeah. Mark Erston.
Nobody's that name, right?
Was I close?
Everton.
Everton. Sure, we appreciate it. Christine Powell.
Keely.
Powell. Alex Bethy. Beth Miller. Miller. Beth. Beth. Dee Miller.
Oh, the youngest standing up front. Now, look at that here. Youngsters, right, see ya.
Mayans Owens.
No, 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 no. Come here. Come here.
That's all I am saying, buddy.
Kristen Terlinski. And Bonnie Walzke. We appreciate it. It's like a big round of applause. Nothing like a personal endorsement. Would anybody like to give a quick overview of the program or tell anything special about it?
It's well worth the time. It's a great experience to see the different departments within the city. Two of us are from Greer. We've been in Greer for pretty much all our lives, and we learned a lot, and some folks have just been here a few weeks, and we all got a lot out of it and would highly recommend it.
Thank you all. We appreciate it.
And then you guys just want to come over here for a quick.
Yeah, come up here and get a picture. Yeah. Yes. Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you. It's free. A twins or something? Yeah, a twin.
Not that I know of. Counsel, your departmental reports are contained in your packets this evening. As always, the administrator or department head will be glad to give you more information in that regard if you so choose. And Ms. Howell from our finance department joins us this evening for an overview on our financial statement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The brief overview as of October the 31st, 2023. Starting out with the general fund, the year-to-date revenue is $5,149,000. The year-to-date total expenditures are $14,427,000, which is 2% over budget, and the cash balance in the general fund is $11,282,000. Moving on to the hospitality fund, the year-to-date revenue is $12,241,000, which as of now is 3% over budget. The year-to-date expenditures are $2,185,000, and the cash balance in the hospitality fund is $1,627,000. Finally, the stormwater fund, the year-to-date revenue is $66,000, the year-to-date expenditures are $1,344,000, and the cash balance in the account is $1,705,000. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, floor is open for questions. Hearing none. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate the report. We have a petitioner this evening. We do not have those at every meeting, so I'll give you a little bit of information in regards to a petitioner. A petitioner makes an appointment to appear at one of our meetings and does not have to be in relationship to anything that is on the agenda. But this evening, we are highlighting Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Ms. Doris McClellan from the American Cancer Society, Action Network volunteer, is going to join us. And so if you would, please come to the podium, and the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Doris McClellan. I live at 247 Cornellson Drive. And story, when my friend Sally was diagnosed with geoblastoma, that's cancer of the brain, took her life eventually, but her attitude was, I got this thing, I don't want to read about it, I don't want to know anymore, I don't want to study, don't talk to me about it. I, on the other hand, was diagnosed 2005 with breast cancer, went through treatments. Then again, in 2022, just last year, lung cancer. Brings me to you tonight to make us all aware of this terrible disease. I dove right in, though, unlike my friend Sally. I've gotten very involved with the American Cancer Society, especially as a captain of a Relay for Life team. By the way, the relay is coming back to Greer, if you don't know anything about it. It was here for 25 years, then off to Greenville, then Spartanburg, but we're going to be back here in Greer this year, May 3rd. I also am volunteer driver for the Road to Recovery Program, taking people to their appointments. So yes, here to share that this has been, November has been Lung Cancer Awareness Night, Month, and I'd like to share a few facts quickly. We all know that smoking itself is very detrimental to our health, but we don't all know, and according to the Surgeon General, that there's no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke. Each year in the United States, secondhand smoke causes nearly 42,000 deaths among people who do not smoke. I did not smoke ever. Well, when I was 11. I was a school principal, and the kids used to ask me, Mrs. McClellan, do you, do you smoke? And I'd say, well, because you know, they know, they know you're going to try. But I'd say, but I quit when I was 11. Yeah. But it's a serious thing, secondhand smoke. And the only way to reduce exposure to secondhand smoke is to make all public places, including all workplaces, restaurants, bars, gaming facilities, 100% smoke-free. Secondhand smoke can cause or exacerbate a wide range of other health issues. Probably don't have to tell you this because your doctors already have: cardiovascular disease, stroke, respiratory infections, and asthma. So I'd just like to close by asking the council to consider what it would mean if Greer were to become the next smoke-free city in the state of South Carolina. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll now move on to the administrators' report. Mr. Merriman.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, thank you very much. I want to run through a couple things. As you all know, December is very busy in the City of Greer, and so I just want to run through just some dates and times for some of our well-known events and a couple of things that are kind of new. First of all, the Christmas tree lighting is December 1st, Friday night, from 5 to 8. And it'll be, take right, the lighting actually happens right up here at the top of the promenade, so I look forward to seeing Santa and the mayor fire off our Christmas season with the Christmas tree lighting. Breakfast with Santa will be the following morning, that is, and I think there might be some tickets available, I'm not 100% sure, but you can double-check on the, on the city's website. The Farmer's Market Christmas Festival is on December 2nd through the 3rd, from 2 to 4. So we'll have a Christmas festival down here in City Park. The Christmas Parade is on the 3rd, from 2:30 to 4. It is a 1.1-mile route, beginning at Point Set in Memorial and ending at North Main and Cunningham. So I would get there a little early and claim a spot along the route, but it's always a wonderful event. Drop by the Center for the Arts and check out some of our local folks who've competed in a gingerbread house competition. That will be available for viewing December 6th through the 16th. The Holiday Arts Fair is Saturday, September, December 9th, from 10 till 2, and that is located inside the Center for the Arts, so make sure you drop by for that as well. I think there are going to be about 20 vendors there with some food trucks, et cetera, so come check that out. And finally, Through the Eyes of a Child is an art exhibition on display now at the Center for the Arts as well. So always something fun and exciting going on in the city, especially with our Parks and Rec Department. They keep us, keep us festive, especially at Christmas time. But Mr. Mayor, Counsel, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. And go ahead.
I've got a couple of questions regarding two projects that the city has going on. One is the fuel dispensing and tracking system we were putting in, and then just an update on the Super Road Fire Station that's coming out of the ground now. Is, I know that when, when we talked about that fuel dispensing software and hardware that was supposed to help us track it down to the, you know, the gallon, has that, have we seen?
All of the, so to answer your question on the first one, all of the, all the city fleet has been, has had the new software installed. The software has not been installed on the pumps as of yet. We've had some licensing issues with the particular contractor that we're trying to work through to ensure that they are eligible to do the work within the city and in the state of South Carolina. So the work has been done on the vehicles. We're just waiting on the final software and the construction work to begin at the pumps. The second question is about the updating the Super Road Fire Station. Construction is moving along as scheduled. I think you, you're starting to see stuff coming out of the ground now. We're looking to, I believe, Mike, that is a June, July, late June completion date for, for that facility.
I guess still on budget.
Yes, sir. And just a reminder, we are having a workshop at the end of the, or the beginning of the next council meeting, starting at 5:30, and it's at that time we will update on, update council on all the projects that we're doing. Thank you.
We will also have a special guest with us for the tree lighting ceremony and then also for the Christmas Parade. We are going to have a local Make-A-Wish child that is going to be participating in the, in the tree lighting and some other activities that will be going on that evening, weather permitting, and then is hopefully going to serve potentially with her sisters again on Sunday in the parade, and you'll be seeing more information about that. And we are looking forward to hosting this, this opportunity for her to meet with Santa and then leave next week for a trip to Disney World. So Ellie is going to be here for those events. I'll just put that out as something else that we are incorporating to this year's celebration. With that, then, let's move to appointments of boards and commissions. We've got a couple of vacancies that are coming up here at the end of the year. We have one in the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. This is the Hospitality Industry Representative. James Vogon's term expires 12/31/2023. Do we have any new or additional information in regards to filling that position?
No, sir, not at this time.
Thank you. With that, then, we'll move to the Recreation Association Board of Trustees. There are two openings there. District 5, Melissa Pageant Smith's term expires 12/31/2023. Any update on replacing Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir. I'd like to renominate Melissa Smith. She said she would like to serve another term.
That comes as a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Bettis, Councilman Bettis, in regards to her service? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Earwood.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Danner.
Yes. Counsel, also in the Recreation Association Board of Trustees, Mark Medcath, who has served as our at-large representative, I think has fulfilled three terms, I believe, which is his limit, and so I would like to take the opportunity this evening to provide a nomination for that committee. Many of you know Mike Wright, Michael Wright. He lives on 305 Miller Street, North Miller Street, and most recently has served on the Planning Commission. He has agreed to serve on the Recreation Association Board of Trustees as an at-large. I bring that as a motion, and we'll entertain a second.
Second.
Any questions, comments in regards to Mr. Wright's service on the Recreation Commission? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Earwood.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Danner.
Yes. Counsel, also in the Recreation Association Board of Trustees, Mark Medcath, who has served as our at-large representative, I think has fulfilled three terms, I believe, which is his limit, and so I would like to take the opportunity this evening to provide a nomination for that committee. Many of you know Mike Wright, Michael Wright. He lives on 305 Miller Street, North Miller Street, and most recently has served on the Planning Commission. He has agreed to serve on the Recreation Association Board of Trustees as an at-large. I bring that as a motion, and we'll entertain a second.
Second.
Any questions, comments in regards to Mr. Wright's service on the Recreation Commission? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Earwood.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Danner.
Yes. Counsel, also in the Recreation Association Board of Trustees, Mark Medcath, who has served as our at-large representative, I think has fulfilled three terms, I believe, which is his limit, and so I would like to take the opportunity this evening to provide a nomination for that committee. Many of you know Mike Wright, Michael Wright. He lives on 305 Miller Street, North Miller Street, and most recently has served on the Planning Commission. He has agreed to serve on the Recreation Association Board of Trustees as an at-large. I bring that as a motion, and we'll entertain a second.
Second.
Any questions, comments in regards to Mr. Wright's service on the Recreation Commission? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Earwood.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, let's move to items of old business, of which we have a number this evening. The first of which is the second and final reading of, excuse me, is the second and final reading of Ordinance Number 28-2023. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by Greer Christian Learning Center, located at 3055 East Gap Creek Road by 100% petition. Ms. Stahl, any new or additional information in that regard?
Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item on November 20th and recommended approval.
Second reading comes with approval from the Planning Commission. I'll entertain a motion to consider?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Floor's open for discussion. Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, let's move to the second item, the second and final reading of Ordinance Number 29-2023. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property located at 13721 East Wade Hampton Boulevard LLC, located and also located at 13721 East Wade Hampton Boulevard by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification for C3 for the property. New or additional information in that regard?
Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item and recommended approval.
Comes with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And we'll need a second for discussion.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion. Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, we've got the second and final reading of Ordinance Number 30-2023. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a development agreement by and between the City of Greer, South Carolina, and project line-out with respect to certain reimbursements to be made for certain investments made in the city, authorizing the execution and delivery of additional documentation, and taking additional actions, and providing for other matters related therefore. Any new or additional information in regards to Ordinance Number 30-2023?
No, sir.
Comes to us as a second reading. I'll entertain a motion for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor's open.
So have they acquired the other property?
By knowledge, they have, they have acquired the property. Yes, sir.
Do we have any update on the site plan?
No, sir.
Okay, so let me be clear, that I'm understanding all of this. We don't have a site plan. What we're doing to hold anybody or hold accountable developers is what is written in the agreement. But of course, the site plan, the way it's written is, or the way it's drawn is so general that we really don't have any information off of that. On Park Avenue, the site plan does show two points of entry/exit, and we've gone back and we've verified this, that if this development happens and based on the entry and the exits of the development, that the road would have to meet city standards. My staff, if they would measure the road, and sure enough, it is not wide enough, it does not meet the specifications, so they would have to widen the road at their expense, correct?
Yes, sir.
And sidewalks would be installed at the same?
Per the UDO. Yes, sir.
Comments? Questions? Go ahead. Just a statement. Okay. I said it last time, that we have the opportunity because we, we want this, we have the ability to make this shine a, as a point of entry into town, and not so much by requiring, you know, fancy buildings or anything like that, but at least the landscaping around the perimeter with lighting and sidewalks and things of that sort. I, I don't know that we've achieved that.
I want to say too, and I'm supporting this project because I know that, I understand we're displacing a park, and that's, that's obviously very important to a lot of us here on council and in the city as well, and I see this as a step in the right direction. We've already, we've already figured out a place for the outdoor basketball courts to move. We've already assigned the next spot for the, to replace the softball field that was there, that was, that was heavily utilized, and we're already identifying a good spot for the new basketball facility, which is going to be upgraded and have some, a lot more opportunity besides just one full court. I'm looking for something more substantial and a lot bigger, and I think that's what we're all gunning for right here, so that's why I'm continuing to be in support of this project.
Questions?
I do have one question, and I don't want to muddy up anything, but you, you said that they'd be doing this to the UDO standards. Can we confirm that's correct? Because I don't know, I want to make sure that's correct and it's not under the old development standards.
No, it, it, it outlines that in the development agreement itself, that it is specific to those standards.
Okay.
Yep.
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
No.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, let's move to the second and final reading of Ordinance Number 35-2023. This is an ordinance amending the business license ordinance of the city of Greer to update the class schedule as required by Act 176 of 2020. Any new or additional information in regards to the final reading of Ordinance Number 35-2023?
No, sir.
With that, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, the second and final reading of Ordinance Number 31-2023. This is an ordinance to repeal the city of Greer zoning ordinance identified as Appendix A zoning of the city of Greer Code of Ordinances, and to the city of Greer Land Development Regulations to replace the zoning ordinance and land development regulations with the city of Greer Unified Development Ordinance. Ms. Cotty joins us for this discussion. Floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. So you received an updated draft as Appendix A in your packets, and then updated public comments to date as well, Appendix C. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. With that, then, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Floor's open. How do we, as, as a question about procedure, I, I know that, that if we want to make amendments, now would be a good time to do that, but because of the document i- is so lengthy, is, is there another way that we want to handle that? If council has any preferences or, because I, I have, as an example, I think I have five proposed amendments, and my, what I, some of you may, may want to go back and do more research on it before you, we hold a vote on it. I, I don't know, it's...
As part of the legislative process, that is, that is your prerogative to offer amendments. I would say at this point in time, as we are at second reading, we can, we can proceed in, in that regard with those. If, if council is, is aware of those, if, if not, you know, the only, the only other thing that I would, would suggest would be, I think we need to do them individually if we're going to do them. I think that's the best way to do it by amendment. The, you know, the other option would be to make a motion to, to hold it over for, for discussion with, with other members of this council and/or staff for, for clarification. So we've got several options tonight in terms of, in terms of which way you or anybody at this table can, can take this discussion at this point in, in time.
Well, I, I will go ahead and make my proposed amendments, but i- if it, if members of council decide that, well, we need to research this more, I have no problem with going forward with a second reading, with assurances that this would show, all of this would come back on, or, or the amendment process would come back on a scheduled date, instead of just leaving it out there for somebody to, to call, that we would set a date tonight when it would come back to deal with certain amendments. But, but I'll go ahead and make my first proposal.
I believe you could request an amendment to the UDO at any point you wanted to. I don't think you have to rely on anyone else to bring that point to council.
Well, I, I don't, I just, I just want to make sure that, one, I, I'm for this whole process, trying to get things squared away that probably, I, I believe needs to be squared away as we move along, instead of kicking the can down the road. So I'll make the amendments and, and, you know, we'll, we'll just go from there.
And I'll predict there will be future amendments to the UDO.
I am sure there will be. I'm sure there will be. Actually, you can help me with where some of this information is located, because I probably am not going to go in the order that they're listed, but there is a regulation regarding the square foot of window signage allowed in different districts. Originally, I believe, it was 50%, and then as the UDO, it has language that places different regulations for different areas, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
We, as I read that, I just started looking at different businesses around town, and there's a lot of businesses that have been in place for many, many, many years that use those, their windows for signage, whether it's fast food, whether it's grocery stores. And as far as I know, we haven't had any issues or people, any complaints about this 50% rule. Is that correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
So my question is, if it's working, why do we need to change it? So I would make the, the amendment that we leave the allowable square footage for signs placed on windows at 50% citywide. So Councilman Airwood has brought forth an amendment to the ordinance that has just been received, Ordinance Number 31-2023, that would negate changes to the sign language or window language. Is that a section that you can give us some reference on at this point?
Sure. The overlays are page 84 and page 87. Those are proposed to be 20%, and then citywide is in the sign article in 5, 7, no. Is in the sign section of Article 5. So right now, the current standard is 50%, except I believe in the downtown historic overlay, and then UDO proposes 20% in the entryway overlay and the transitional overlay, and then 30% citywide.
And the current ordinance says simply 50, up to 50% in all of those areas?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So you're wanting to maintain?
Yes.
The, the current ordinance? Okay, so the, the amendment then is to the final reading, or to the Ordinance Number 31-2023, and it would pertain to pages 84 through 87, and then Article 5 of the sign ordinance. This is to negate changes to those two items within the UDO. That comes as a proposed amendment. It will need a second.
Second.
Okay, so the floor is open for discussion in regards to the amendment.
Is there a particular reason that it was suggested to be changed? I mean, didn't have any complaints or anything about it? Was it just part of a new regulation?
Sure. So it was just best practices from around the country, and in general, signage on windows doesn't promote transparency, so especially in downtown areas that are encouraged pedestrian activity, that can be a deterrent, and then public safety as well. So those are the reasons why.
Is, is this primarily enforced like our nuisance abatement? I mean, is this something that your staff would spend time going out and checking, or is this driven by complaint, or what?
It would likely be complaints, or if staff or code enforcement saw window signs, but primarily it's when a new business opens and they give us their sign package, even though it doesn't require a permit, they typically include the window signage in that package for staff review.
Thank you.
When you mentioned public safety, how would that affect public safety with the signage in the window?
So typically, signs cover the window, and they're not see-through, and so you can't see what's happening in the building, and so that can sometimes be a public safety concern.
Typically, you'll find that banks and pharmacies and lots of other places don't allow signs in their, in their windows for that very reason.
Scott, I should be clear on this, but I'm not. How does this, either way it's written, how does it interact with like the window perf type, are you familiar with what I'm talking about? Like the, I guess it's made out of vinyl, almost, and it's one way, you can see out, but you can't see in, and, you know, almost signage from the exterior.
So that would not apply as a sign unless it had a commercial message on it. We do have a separate transparency requirement in the downtown overlay, which does have an administrative adjustment up to 100% based on two council members' concerns about facing sunlight and that, the damage that it could do to interior of a store, but so that is a different standard for transparency.
Mr. Airwood, are there businesses that you're aware of that this would hurt potentially going to the new standard?
Well, one, if it's enforced, yes. If, if it is enforced, the, the one that sticks out in my mind the most is quality If, if it is enforced, the, the one that sticks out in my mind the most is Quality Foods. It was Community Cash before then, and we all remember all the, what looks like hand painted signs. They've, they've updated it, but that's where they do a lot of their advertising. And then when, if, just look at a fast food restaurant, a McDonald's or any, any of them, they're always promoting their products, their, what, what they're selling. And i- if, if you, if you look around, there's a lot of businesses that utilize that space to advertise. Of course, you know, I'm, I'm one who believes that the, the business owner knows what's, you know, what's best practice for them. And the mayor mentioned banks is one, they normally don't put things on their windows. And, and that, that's great, and that's their decision. But you, you go back to Quality Foods and then prior to that was Community Cash. That was, you know, that's, that's been kind of their, a trademark or hallmark of, of how they have advertised for many, many, many years. And like I say, there's others that, that do it. And, and I saw a business the other day, wasn't located in the city, but they had painted Christmas sayings and wreaths and stuff in their windows. And it, you could tell that it took up over 50% of their window space. But I, I don't, I don't see an issue with it. And if there's, if, if, I, I don't buy into the, the best practices that, that Ashley gave us. I believe that it might be suitable for some, some other places, but not necessarily suitable for us.
Is this specifically to the downtown overlay in this example?
So the 20% is for the downtown transitional and downtown entryway. And then the 30% is citywide.
Mr. Erwood, do you see any place even in the downtown overlay to have a more stringent, lower standard? Or you feel strongly about 50% citywide?
Well, I don't, I don't think we've had any issues before, so I don't know why we would want to break down or break out the downtown overlay. I'm sure the business owners, i- if, if they've got signage that's going to promote their business, they want to be able to put it in those windows. I, I think we have a lot of rules and regulations that help protect the look of downtown. And I don't know that this, a, a restriction of 20% signage helps, helps a business or promotes. I don't, I don't know that it promotes really anything positive, it's just there, it would just be a regulation. And if we're not going to enforce it, why do it? Others?
I think, you know, my viewpoint, I went through the sign thing a long time ago. I think merchants should be able to do whatever they want to do with their windows, as long as it's not vulgar. They're entitled to put anything you want to in your windows. And if it hurts your business, that's on you.
What about, do you have any thoughts on the impact of the surrounding businesses though? Like in, for instance, like in downtown where they're kind of packed together and there may be something, you know, one window that's, or like you're saying, all of the signage covering one window that detracts from the business next door?
If I had a problem with a business next to me or near me, I would go address it with them. I wouldn't expect the city to police windows.
And it can give a unfair disadvantage. And I'll give, if you have a clothing store and they have storefront windows, they can take mannequins and they can display all their products in, in there. Where if you've got a, another business right beside it that does not sell clothing, but maybe they sell a service or something that you've got to order, whatever, the only way they have to advertise is place those signs on the windows.
And we're, historically, we're looking at, was it 1890 to 1930? Was that the time period? I suspect if you look at downtown merchants back in that period, I bet they had window signs plastered a lot. None of them lighted.
I think that has to be part of, part of it though, is that we're looking for some type of consistency or standard with businesses. I mean, I think that's the intent of what we're trying to accomplish here.
I would agree with that.
Maybe we should produce the signage for them.
I don't, I don't think that's the case. I don't, I don't know that that's the case. I think, you know, to your point, I think businesses have that leeway. But at the same time, what one business does, does impact the other. And if you're looking for a consistent look or character or, if you will, I, I think, I think you do have to have some type of standard. I mean, you said, well, Jay, were you saying it was 50% before?
Yes.
So we did have at least a standard of 50%, you know?
Right.
We currently have that.
Right.
Right.
And I'm, my proposal would leave it at 50% citywide.
And like, and the point you're trying to make is this not, this is not complaint driven, this is just what's considered a stand, who, and who's, who determined the standard, it's just?
I mean, just research of other jurisdictions and then again, just best practices, especially for downtown areas. You want it pedestrian activated, so transparent, active on that floor level. But again, it's the will of council, so.
Well, the, let me speak to the, the folks in downtown. Every business that's down there wants the business beside of them to be successful. Because that brings in traffic, whether it's foot traffic or automobile traffic or a taxi cab. It brings traffic into downtown. Therefore, i- if business A is successful and business B right beside it, they're bringing more and more potential customers for business B to capture. So I, I don't, I, I don't think limiting their ability to advertise helps. I, I said this, like, you know, we, I don't know what we're trying to accomplish in downtown. Is it, if it's a look that we want, if it's a, if, if it's a sanitized 1920 version of what people think that downtowns look like, then, then that's the way you go. But if you want your downtown to be successful, if you want business to, to be successful, they have to be able to advertise. And that's one way, an inexpensive way to advertise.
I think you have to, I think you have to trust the merchants to know what's best. Like Mark's business, the lights coming out the window are a huge attraction. I mean, that, you want to go to that place because you see right through his windows. But that's not true of every business down through there.
For what it's worth, I understand why. I think I understand where the recommendations from staff came from originally, but also understand, understand what you're getting at. And I agree with you, Riley, as well. I think to the greatest degree possible, we need to leave that in a business owner's hands, unless we have a good reason not to. And, and you're right, Jay. I mean, in downtown, that's absolutely the dynamic. I think we all want, want another to be successful because you're right, it's what's feeding off the traffic in general that way. So my, my questions and comments weren't in being contrarian, but simply just trying to understand.
Sure.
You know, where you're coming from that way.
Others?
If we make this amendment, does it, does it screw anything else up in regards to?
No, sir.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest with you, 50%, 20%, it doesn't really make a difference for me. I have an issue with all the gaudy lighting that I see around town where you'll see, well, you know, a sign is one thing, but if they've got rope lighting around and then it's flashing and everything else, how does that, does the UDO address anything like that?
It does prohibit neon lighting and the tube lighting as well.
In all or just downtown?
Neon in downtown, the tube lighting throughout.
Okay.
Mr. Erwood proposes as an amendment to ordinance number 31-2023 that would alter section, Article 5 of the sign ordinance in pages 84 through 87 in regards to signage size. This proposal would leave signage size at 50, as a maximum of 50% of the windows. A vote yes is in support, a no is a nay. Last call in regards to comments or questions in this regard?
Just want to say one more thing on, on this. I'm, I'm fine with leaving it like it is and then, you know, we could come back and revisit it down the road if there is some type of complaint driven thing or there is something more specific, like for instance, what you're talking about. Like if we identify that that 20% is exactly what we need downtown and there is a look that is of benefit and that all could benefit from that change, then maybe we could come back and revisit it then. So, you know, I understand what you're saying and at this point, you know, I'm, I'm content with, you know, leaving it at 50% like we have it. And, and then like I said, we can have a discussion on it down the road if that's, if that's the council's desire.
Ordinance number 31-2023 as amended. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
No.
Second one?
Yes, in, in the same vein, or the same section, let's not call it vain, the same section is regarding signs. And this might just be information. But I know that, that we're not allowing painted signs on walls. And what I, what I find is that it really is pertaining to murals, not the advertisement of the business.
Sure, so painted signs, the only place they're not allowed is the historic district, which is the 17 properties on Trade and Victoria. And that was a standard identified by SHPO when they helped draft the downtown overlay. In the transitional and entryway, painted signs are allowed. And when we say signs, that would be a commercial message. So that would qualify as a sign and that would be standard to the same dimensions of any sign, whether it was projecting, whether it was on the wall, whether it was wooden, whether it was metal. It would just be subject to those same standards. And then murals are allowed as part of a public art program with city council approval.
Okay, now, and I'm not.
In all districts.
Yeah, my, my, the mural issues, that's not the way I'm going. So if, let's just take Cannon Street.
Sure.
That is, they're allowed there, correct? Because that's, that, that, that is.
Yes.
Okay.
So like a new business.
So they, they could go directly on the, the, the brick or the block or the, whatever it's constructed out of?
Yes, sir, it would just be subject to the same dimension standards.
Okay, all right. I have one regarding utilities, but the mayor and I have talked about that and maybe we'll just hold that over for them. It, it's, it's in regards to having utilities underground from the point they pick it up. And I, I, I will bring this back at a, a, a different date.
Okay.
And I'll have some more information.
Okay.
One other item is that we have, in industrial development, we have a requirement, and I believe the, the wording was, is it monotonous that was used or?
It was, that language was stricken at your request.
Good, but every, at least every hundred feet, there would be a different look in my.
Color, pattern, material, something of that nature, yes, sir.
And, and why is that the case? Why do we want to do that? Why do we want to say for a building that's 300 feet long, that's in an industrial complex, that should have screening on the borders, correct?
If it's adjacent to non-like uses, yes.
Okay. And so the reasoning behind every hundred feet is?
I mean, again, it's best practices. And we've heard from council over and over again that Greer wants quality development. And one of the ways to do that is to regulate architectural standards. There are many industrial properties that are very close to residential properties in the city. And we get complaints about it quite a bit, so it was an attempt to.
By the way it looks or by the way the sounds it comes from?
All, lighting, sounds, the way it looks, everything.
So while we're dealing with right now is the way it looks.
Sure.
But, but if it's, if it's adjacent to a residential development, there should be screening on the perimeter, right?
There would be screening on the perimeter, yes.
So what are we saying, the screening is, doesn't do its job?
No, and I, I mean, again, I, in my response back, I proposed that maybe it'd be limited to facades facing a public right of way or a right of way, not necessarily public.
And so if you had a building that was 110 feet long, so you'd have, say, white and then black?
I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be at the 100, just no more than 100 without a change.
But if it was 110 feet, then the developer could say, okay, this wall is white. And then when we get to 101, we're starting to paint it black?
Potentially.
Okay, this, this is one that I, I did support and, and made that known to council. It is a growing trend, even where it's not required. And if you'll look at particularly along 85 and the road that goes from the Duncan Liman area over to Spartanburg and some of these others where they are developing these, these large, either tilt up or panelled buildings, it does add an element that I think is attractive to, to these buildings. And I've talked with some of the people that supply these panels and with the folks in Spartanburg County. And they have, they have had great success without, without an ordinance in terms of some of these new buildings having this differentiation. And it is, it is at essentially no cost. And so, you know, in the example of a building that's 1,000 feet long, you know, every so often you put two panels in that are a different texture or color. If the building's 110 feet long, then maybe at the entrance you have a panel on each corner there that is of a different color or texture. This is, this is one that I think would greatly improve, particularly in those areas that are visible from both highways and/or main roads would, would be beneficial overall to our community. And, you know, if, if, if council feels this is onerous, I'd be open to an amendment to, to make it facing, you know, to the, the accompanying road or something. But I just don't see this as, as being something that, that developers or builders would, would, would find to be problematic because we're just seeing it as a general rule now. People that have these buildings typically want their building to be a little bit different in some regard. And we've got plenty of 250,000 square foot buildings that are all gray concrete. And I think this is a, a good addition.
Yeah, and, and what you're saying, I, I hear you and I agree. The, I guess the, I, I'm trying to think out beyond five years. I, I hope, and, and this council has asked and I believe directed staff along with Reno to, to try to start to diversify our economy. I believe that right now what we have is our economy is is monolithic, it's it's automobile driven. And what that means, just by the buildings you were talking about, these tilt up panels that are really long, I I think we are at probably capacity right now. Or or we have too much of too much square footage for all of that. But if our economy, if we're able to diversify it to prevent something that that happens like what happened in textiles, when textiles decided to move, we'll have different businesses that probably instead of being one level, they'll go higher. So how do you deal, let's say you've got a a building that's well, let's just use the the Greer Mill, that that's such a three, four story building. And if somebody wanted to build something, some kind of manufacturing, and it's you know, two hundred feet long by five hundred feet deep, how is that, so you you you're going to have from the ground up every hundred feet?
No, yeah, this would be the length. So a good example would be the Parkview Apartments where they have articulated. Every so often, they have kind of a bump out and change in material and change in kind of facade with that articulation.
I guess you don't want to look, all of it look like prisons, you know?
No, and I I I got you, I got you. Yeah, again, I this is sort of back to this argument about who's complaining about it. And I know, I, you know, I don't know that people complain about it, but it's one of those things when you see, you instantly sort of know that that looks better than it would if it was a four hundred foot long wall, you know? No, and 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 yes, I I agree with you, it's.
You would know this, is there a cost problem in doing this? Does it make it that much more expensive?
I I don't know, there there, I'm sure there is a increase in cost because the panel is going to be different unless everything's going to be painted and then you get to certain sections and you you change paint color. Probably, that's probably the least expensive, but you've got panels with, you know, masonry inserts in them and you have different colors and stuff like that. So I don't know, I I I guess the the biggest rub for me is that we tell them we've got to, we we want them to make the building look better, but then we also have stringent regulations about screening. So is our screening not working or, you know, what do we need to do? I I got I got that, I'm not a, I I just don't like the government saying you've got to do this. If it's if it's, you know, if it's health and safety issue, that's one thing. But just because we don't like the way something looks, that that that's where my rub comes, I don't. I I will tell you that I've talked to both a panel manufacturer and a tilt up contractor. There are so many different options out there now that there is a negligible cost to this. You can do it with texture, you can do it with color, you can do it either way. And and they're they do it now in so many different ways and so many different places that the technology is available. Others?
I'll just add, I think it's desirable to, you know, to make sure that our industrial inventory looks just as nice as our commercial inventory and our residential. I mean, we're we're kind of picky, you know, with our planned developments and different things like that about what our expectations are. And and I don't think that it's overbearing or asking too much to make sure that the industrial sites look look appealing as well.
At least the part that's visible, at least the visible part.
Well, I haven't made a a proposal on this or an amendment, so I'll, we're just after this discussion, I'm I'm good with it, we'll just move forward.
Okay. Other amendments?
No, I'm I'm good right now, we'll bring that one back about underground utilities.
Thank you, sir. Council before us this evening is the second and final reading of amended ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty twenty-three.
I'd like to add an amendment myself.
All right.
I would like to, and it it's in a number of places in this UDO, so it's kind of hard to to narrow it down, but I would like to see an amendment that allows powder coated chain link fences that can be used in the rear lot line or in the railroad railroad corridor. The chain link fence is kind of the redheaded stepchild in this document, I've noticed several places. But we have an instance of this now in Greer that that should be allowed because it neither looks bad and it does serve a good purpose. So I would like to see that amendment in the UDO.
Councilman Bettis has suggested an amendment to ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty twenty-three that would allow coated chain link fences in the historic district.
If if you've got a a back lot line that's that's not obvious and you're you're in the railroad corridor, yes.
That is not visible. You want to restate that for me? Is it in the railroad corridor? This this gets pretty specific, I I mean.
If it runs along the railroad, that's where I I I think it should be allowed there.
Okay. Anything that is in the railroad corridor?
And and in all honesty, there's nothing wrong with chain link fence along the back lot line. It's not like it's going to look bad to anybody but you coming out your back door, you know?
And the black certainly looks, I mean, you know, if it was.
Oh, yeah, the black or the green powder coated.
Silver, you know, regular old chain link fence is a different thing than the powder coated black.
And expense wise, it's a much more reasonable option.
So I'll just say it's currently only prohibited in the historic district downtown transitional and downtown entryway overlays.
That's a lot.
But you're just specifically asking on the rail, basically, what's facing the railroad right of way?
That would be my specific request, yes.
So with the portions coming off of, you know, like if they've got sides?
It's in the railroad railway corridor.
So if it connects to the railway corridor, those adjacent pieces, okay.
Yep.
Do we need a sec? I've got a question for Ashley.
Sure. Yeah, we've got, yeah, we've got a proposed proposed amendment, we'll need a second.
I'll second.
Now the floor's open for discussion, yeah.
You you mentioned where the powder coated chain link fences are prohibited, not only in the downtown historic, but a lot of the overlays. If there is new construction requiring detention, water detention, and we have we we have to have a fence around it, what kind of fence is required?
Um, wood, metal, or whatever the materials that are listed that are acceptable in those locations.
So and and when we say wood, that could be the most inexpensive wood fence built, is that right? I mean, it doesn't have to be, but but a builder, developer, owner could choose that, correct?
Yes.
My 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 point being is if you were to choose the least expensive six foot tall privacy fence, then within five years, you're going to see a lot of deterioration versus powder coated metal. And and you know, what what we're trying to do here is establish a look, we want things to look good. So I I I I'm in agreement, I I know where this was, this come from and how it got here, I don't know that I agree with as far as what happened. But I do agree that that the material being proposed is is that's this is worth it, I mean, I I believe that's what the way you should do. Because if we have to build, let's say, a fire station and it's in the downtown area and maybe we want to secure the parking lot behind it, why do we want to have to spend X amount of dollars on a fence that's just going to maybe break down? Because if it's wood, it's going to break down eventually if it's not maintained.
Well, we do have property maintenance codes that require it to not be deteriorated or we can issue a violation.
No, I understand that, but there's also things, it's in this UDO now and it's the property code violations generally aren't brought forth until somebody makes a phone call about it. We don't have enforcement officers just riding around and saying, we got to do this, we need to get getting out, writing tickets or whatever. It's generally, it's generated by citizens' complaints.
Generally, or all fences are supposed to be permitted, so we would review that during the permit process.
I undergot, I understand that, I'm just saying that we require landscaping. And I've had to make calls about landscaping that's just gotten out of hand. And sure enough, we can go out and enforce that. But it's not something that staff does because they already have a full plate. So instead of saying, we're going to cut a fence type out and allow other fence types that are going to have a a much shorter lifespan, you know, or or something that could become, get in disrepair quicker than that that chain link fence, then why not leave that as an option? I'm going to tell you that I, what my objection is, is that we are specifically tailoring something to one specific instance. This is changing an ordinance for one person and one person only that who happens to be suing the city right now. And it feels like we're we're being strong darned in in terms of this, a railroad corridor. By its very nature, you see a railroad corridor from both sides. And we're gonna, we're gonna say you could need to put up a a a fence that everybody else in downtown has got except if you're on a railroad corridor? I mean, we we are bending over backwards here to accommodate somebody that did something that may or may not should have been there by ordinance, shouldn't have been there in the first place. And now we're trying to rectify that situation. And the remedy for this is prescribed in law and hasn't even been addressed to that level. But we're willing to change an entire ordinance because of of one instance where somebody didn't do what they were supposed to.
Well, I don't have a problem having black powder coated chain link fences anywhere, but I didn't want to turn the entire thing upside down and disturb that. This is where it needs to be changed right now. I don't have a problem with black powder coated chain link fencing.
When was the or when was the ordinance regarding the the chain link fence? How old is that?
I mean, I'm not certain, it's been here as long as I have and certainly in the overlay, it was adopted with the overlay.
I'm wondering if the black was in existence when that was written? If it was just a regular chain link fence that, you know, that's put up to keep your kids and dogs in the yard?
I believe the overlay was two thousand fifteen, do you know, Mayor?
All right, off. Would have been in that timeframe, I think, yes.
Yeah, so there was very, I mean, again, this was at the guidance of the state historic preservation office to maintain the integrity of the historic district. And I will also say, the city attorney has advised against taking this type of action until after said court case is settled, but that is up to you guys.
Well, okay, and that just makes me jump off, why weren't we told, I didn't know that we were being sued. I didn't know, I didn't know that the city attorney had advised us not to take this up.
That's the next step when you're turned down by the BZA.
Right.
You have to go to court.
Yes, I understand that, but if our council, if if our legal counsel is saying, yeah, you probably, you don't need to take this up, then why weren't we advised of that?
I mean, it's never been brought up before this meeting as an option, so.
Wasn't anything that I thought we were going to be dealing with tonight, today, the honest truth. I mean, this is, this is prescribed, I read to you in our last meeting, the state statute that says our roles and responsibilities, and it says who holds higher regard than us in regards to planning and zoning matters. And BZA is the one group that appeals go to as a means of us not legislatively getting into these specific kinds of issues. And it says that the appeal is made to the circuit court. And and I I I know that and I ag- agree, I don't necessarily agree with that. But as I have gone through this, what I don't want to have to have happen is decisions or 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 language in a document that that maybe I believe or council believes is going to cause someone to go ask for permission to do something that we're saying that you can't or maybe it's not clear. And then they have to pay an extra fee to go before the BZA. And then they they're they're taking the chance that the BZA may say no. BZA says, no, we don't have, it's out of our hands at that point, like you said, and it goes to an attorney. I don't, or goes to goes to the courts. I I I would like for us to, that that's to prevent that. I understand how this has come before council. I, you know, being in the construction business, I I, people should know certain things, fencing companies know, you got to have a permit. But but now what Mr. Bettis is saying and then what we found out, or as we we dig deeper into the language, is that those types of fences are prohibited in a lot of the, not not only just downtown, but the overlay districts. Correct, or some of the overlays that are joined downtown, that that that.
Yes, in our current code, it is prohibited in the downtown overlay, which encompasses in the new UDO, the historic district and the transitional. It is also prohibited, I believe, in highway transitional, which is parts of East Point Set and Highway one oh one. So currently, it's prohibited in several overlays. And again, in the UDO, it is proposed to be prohibited in our three overlays that we streamlined.
And I'm not, I'm not against a discussion about that in some of these other areas. In the downtown historic overlay, we have for the last close to ten years required these fences and people have complied with that. I don't know why we want to make an exception now, particularly when it involves railroad right of way. I don't even know that we can approve that somebody can do something in railroad right of way. That that is, you just said something, in the railroad right of way. Well, so if and you said you don't know that we have the authority to.
Does the city or anybody have any besides the railroad have any authority over that?
So if that's the case, in in this in this situation, is the, where's the fence located that's not on private property? I don't know, I, you know, the verbiage is that it would.
It's my understanding that about eighty-five percent is, they've indicated that some is in the railroad right of way, but we have not seen a survey, so I'm not certain.
I mean, if we're going to, i- i- if if we're going to do, if this council agrees that we don't want to do the the coated fences in the downtown area, then.
Then let, let's, let's just do away with it, why, why are we talking about? A very specific incidence that involves a railroad corridor that. We're, we're jumping through too many hoops here on this thing.
Well, let's don't talk about that, let's talk about doing away with it, period. Do away with the prohibition of chain link.
Well, why don't we add the chain link to some of the other areas if we want to? I mean, I've got no, I've got no problem with the discussion about whether or not the transitional area is appropriate. Jay's raised a, a very valid point this evening, what if, what if, you know, somebody needs to retain. You know, needs it for, for a water retention pond or for storage or whatever. You know, maybe that is appropriate in that particular case. I don't think chain link fence is appropriate, whether it's power coated or painted or dipped or whatever it is. In our downtown historic district.
Makes a big difference where it is.
That's, that's my entire point.
Yeah, but if it's not seen, wh- what difference does it make?
If it's in a railroad corridor, it's gonna be seen from every side.
Not necessarily.
Where is the railroad hidden?
No, I'm, not the railroad, but if, if you go down that corridor, if you go down the railroad, you're gonna see chain link fence on both sides already. It's there.
In our downtown.
Absolutely, if you stand at this place we're talking about and look right across near at Langford Electric. There's nasty looking chain link fence up.
That is, that is probably on private property, is it not?
No, no, I don't think so.
No, I, I, I will agree, there's a, there's a house down there that probably has chain link fence.
Well, there's probably several in the one oh one area that we were talking about too.
But, but I, I would assume all of those or both of those were put up well before we had regulations about it.
Yeah, maybe, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think, I think more than maybe.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I suspect those, those fences were put up well before two thousand and fifteen. Others?
For me, I don't think it's a chain link versus no, no chain link. I, I can't speak for anybody else, but my guess is we wouldn't even be talking about this if there wasn't a specific situation and. I don't have a big problem with how it looks. Um, I guess what the general bigger overarching issue that I have heartburn with is. Seeking to remedy an existing violation of our ordinance by amending. What we're considering tonight, and that being really the reason why we're discussing it tonight as, as an amendment. Um, and that does give me great pause.
Do, do we know if there was a permit issued for this fence, for the chain link fence?
No, there is not a permit pulled.
There wasn't a permit?
No, sir.
So the owner took it upon themselves to put up a chain link fence without a permit?
Yes, sir. Well, I think he hired the contractor and as Jay said, who just didn't get a permit for some.
Did the contractor make the decision to put up a chain link fence?
Make the decision to put it up, no, he was contracted to do it.
So he was told to put that up?
Yeah. I don't think the person did, I don't think he had a clue that it wasn't allowed at the time.
Well, he's got it on part of the building.
Yes, he does, uh.
So he obviously had a clue.
Well, I, I don't, I can't speak for him, I don't know.
I would caution council about saying. That, that we're trying to remedy a situation, a single situation by changing the rules. Because we have done the same in our downtown to allow for development. We've carved out parcels that, um, were in certain districts to allow certain types of construction. And so. Whether you think it's right or it's wrong. We, we, this body has allowed that to happen in our downtown before, so.
Well, I, I think the mayor and I just disagree. My intent is that it be available to use in the proper place in the downtown. And he doesn't believe that, I just don't want it, see it happen again, I think it should be allowed in certain places.
When it comes to chain link fences, you know, we got different types, like I can go to Home Depot and get a black chain link fence. In our U D O or anywhere, do we specify the type of material or gauge material?
No, it's just chain link.
So that would be my issue if we do include in downtown area. I mean, we're already requiring other residents or, you know, other business owners to have a higher, a higher quality fence. I would at least want something as comparable for the chain link fence to be a higher gauge steel, not the standard things you would see.
And you just don't want the galvanized look.
Right.
And then that's.
And that's the main thing.
And I, I thought that we did require, I know some places do, for retention ponds. That it, it's not just the galvanized, uh, chain link, that it's actually some kind of coating that's on it.
Um, that may be, stormwater typically reviews the plans for that.
Well, I'm not talking about just the galvanizer, I mean, I want it to be powder coated, but I wanna be powder coated, coated, but the good, the good high grade steel too, yeah.
Um, so I did bring up a map, um, I just wanted to call attention to the only places where it's prohibited. Are, um, the red, the mint, and then the gold corridors in the city. In the current draft of U D O.
And let's just say that we wanted this conversation to continue about fence materials and where they go and, you know, kinda like Mr. Booker's pointing out, the. The finishes of the materials or whatever, is that something that we could amend, you know, at a future meeting and be more specific about that and?
Of course, we could bring options or do some further research. Absolutely, I mean, as we've stated many times, that we fully expect to be bringing you. Bi-monthly, possibly even monthly amendments as we use the code. Um, so I fully expect this next year to have quite a few amendments, so we could certainly bring it forward for further discussion or a work session. It's really the will of council. Staff is happy to research or gather any information that you'd like.
Which may be appropriate.
Yes, that's, that's what I.
But, in this particular instance, it hasn't run the course to seek the remedy that is set in state law. We're making a change to prevent that from happening.
No, I'm not, I'm not supporting the amendment, I'm.
If we want to revisit this, then we should, we need to do it later, not to change it tonight in this.
Right, no, I, I agree.
Others?
I'm good with that because it's already going to court, already back on the docket.
Okay. But we do have an amendment in a second.
I'll withdraw the amendment i- in light of that.
Okay, well, if you're withdrawing that then, I have just one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mine's in regards to the lot sizes.
Okay.
Uh, in this U D O, are these the same requirements that we had had before? Are they smaller or?
Um, most of them are smaller, they've been consolidated because we streamlined districts. Um, we typically went with the smallest of the streamlined districts.
So why, why did we come down, why did we lessen the size of the lots? Cause you, so many of the subdiv- well, I would say basically in the last five, six years or maybe ten, time goes by so fast. The homes that are built now, I mean, you know. When you look at them, it looks like you could stick, you know, your neighbor stick your arm out and you stick your arm out and you all can shake from standing beside your house. Uh, it looks like they're just crammed in too tight, and I know that that's what the builder wants. Um, and they're selling. But I, I think sometimes it ends up being, um, down the road, you know, I wish I'd got one that had a little bit bigger yard. And not right against my neighbor, so I think a lot of those issues come up, and I know, just briefly, when I was pulling up some. Um, I saw like, uh, even on the rural residential, where ours is twenty, they would have thirty. So, you know, there was just different things there, and when it's this traditional neighborhood. Now, these are just the new homes that's going up all around the area right now, single family homes, is that what the traditional neighborhood is?
Um, it would be properties that are currently zoned R five, R seven, five. Yes, R five and R seven five.
Yeah, because, I mean, some of these lot sizes in here, they just seem, seem so small, and I know in, in the previous meeting, I had mentioned. Something about the setbacks, uh, from the front. Uh, how far it is from the road, and then, um, sometimes you'll ride by and. I, I think even in some of the older neighborhoods, you'd run into the same issue though, with the sidewalks, the driveway's so short, you know, that they can't hardly get their cars parked in there.
Yeah, I will say we did make an amendment, it's in the parking table. That requires the minimum driveway length of twenty feet unless it's rear or side loaded. So if it does have a driveway leading up to your house, it's gonna have to be a minimum of twenty, whereas right now it's eighteen.
Okay, okay.
So we did make that amendment based on your comments.
Why wouldn't you make that the driveway wider instead of deeper or longer?
I mean, that's something we could certainly consider, but we've heard overhang into the streets has been a concern, so we went with length. But we certainly could look at width as well.
And, and I'm sure that a lot of the townhomes condominiums, they have issues with parking.
Yes, and we did increase their parking to two and a half instead of two as well. Cause we have heard those concerns.
What happens when, let's just use parking and setbacks and things like that, and let's take the Victor Mill or. Greer Mill area, and someone comes in and takes down a couple of blocks. And so now they're, and, and there's reasons to do that is because you've got a house that may be nine hundred square feet and. Definitely not built to code, um, they take those down and, and then what they're left with is a lot. Uh, with all the utility taps already there, so they don't have to, but there's no driveway. Do we require driveways or do we, or do we even?
Um, parking is to be on a hard surface, so yes, but I mean, if they're.
So they can park on the street? As they do now.
Currently, yes, I don't think we have any ordinance that prohibits it.
No, that's not what I'm saying, or my question. Somebody, a developer, builder, whoever comes in, takes down two square blocks.
Okay.
Decides, e- each lot is big enough, we're gonna put houses on each lot.
Yes, they would have to have parking for two per home. Excluding the garage, and then parking has to be on a hard surface. And again, it has to be a minimum of twenty feet unless it's, um, unless they're gonna be rear loaded.
What was the reason in making the lot sizes smaller with this U D O?
Um, again, it was just streamlining the zoning districts, um, and our comprehensive plan does call for increased density. And council hasn't seemed to shy away from that in the past, so.
Well, if they're gonna be smaller than the existing ones now, I think maybe we ought to switch back. And use our others, because if they're gonna be smaller, then I don't see where the appeal would be.
Well, what, what's the, what is the drawback of having a small lot?
Well, I think when you're looking at, now you're looking at condominiums and things like that, now. When you're moving into a condominium, you're moving there because you don't want a big yard, or you don't want any space. Uh, and you know, if you're moving into a townhome or a condominium, there's gonna be somebody right beside you, you know that. Um, but in moving into a traditional neighborhood, now what size of yard do you have?
Well, we've got over an acre, but, but we bought three acres and then subdivided it.
Right, right.
But, but, but my, my, like I was saying the last meeting about parking. Um, our driveway is probably longer than all the drive, new driveways that are put in. But like this afternoon, uh, our youngest son, his girlfriend were there, uh, my truck and my wife's vehicle was there, so. We had somebody parking on the road, our driveway was full, had somebody parking on the road. So, I, I mean, I understa-. I understand what you are saying, I did, and, and, and part of me agrees, but part of me says. Well, why did they build like this, and why do people buy?
They're built like that because the builder needs, can get more money, he can get more houses in the space.
Not, 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 and, and I don't knock him or her for that.
Well, I know, I mean, that's, that's his profession, that's what he needs to do.
But people buy that.
Yeah, I know they do, because there's not too many others available, and I, I will tell you. New, never lived in, if you're on a hill, straight up, you can sell that house if it's new. If it's going down into the gully and it's new, you can probably sell that house too, first time. Come around the next time, it's not so new, it's not the appealing part. That's a steep hill, either down or up, so those things, maybe to the new. New always attracts, it's fresh, it's clean, nobody else has been there, nobody else's dog has been there or anything else, it's new, so that's appealing.
But your neighborhood, your lot sizes are smaller than. Lots that are in subdivisions that were built in the sixties and seventies.
Yeah, but my house, the houses, our houses, let's say, I think they were built ninety-six, around in the middle nineties, I'll say. And the lot sizes there are a lot more appealing than the lot sizes in the new homes. And, and I, I'll guarantee, I'll, I'll agree with you on the fact that a lot of people, and like I said, the reason they moved to the condominiums. And the townhomes, it's just cause they don't want yard work. Uh, but most of the people that buy homes, you know, they have their family and. Kids, and they do need some space in the backyard or in the front yard or side, beside your house. I remember years ago, I, and maybe because I lived in the county then. Uh, there was something that came up, and I believe that the fire department had told me at that time. That they had to have so much space in between each house in order to get the fire truck through. Now, that may have just been a county rule, and that may have been a nineteen eighties rule, I don't know. But that they were required, it was required to have enough space to get the fire truck through, so they could put out fires if they needed it, you know. So whether that's changed or where that came from, or whether that was a misinformation at that time. I just recall that being a very vivid conversation. But anyway, I'm just for the houses not being loaded up on top of each other.
Thank you, others?
So can I make an amendment that, do I, would I have any support?
You can make an amendment if you require.
To, to at least go back to what we have, instead of making them smaller than what we have.
Let me, let me say this before you make your amendment, I mean, uh, we've done real estate for years and you understand scarcity. You understand that the value of real estate is determined by how much real estate is available, and then.
Right.
And then if you look at, you know, the maps that, that they're proposing and, you know, and you're, you're talking specifically about traditional neighborhood and. Where R five and R seven point five is allowed. It's just because those lots don't exist, I mean, you can't go out and find, I mean, where is the acre lot close to downtown where you can build?
The acre lot, I'm asking to at least put it back to where it was instead of bringing it, decreasing the lot size. I, I don't understand why we would decrease the lot size.
You're doing it to create density, to provide more house, more affordable, or not even really affordable housing, it's not even affordable, it's just, it's, it's to provide. Housing in areas where people want to be and want to live, and we're providing more of an opportunity to do that.
Yeah, well, there you're talking about just cramming them in in order to get more people in, is that correct?
That is the density, that's correct. I think there's a.
I just don't see cutting down the lot size, I mean, if, if they're coming down from what they were previously. Then I would say that that's a little bit too much, because right now I think they're. In the neighborhoods that are going up now, in the single family homes, I think there're lots. in the neighborhoods that are going up now, in the single family homes, I think their lots are just too small.
But the buyers disagree with you.
Well, how many buyers? I would guarantee you go out and take a survey, and I saw the national news one time. How many people, due to the shortage of homes, wish they had not bought that house that they bought for different reasons? But it was the only one that was available. Okay, this house is thirty thousand dollars more than it was last year just because there's a shortage of houses, you know, so it gets into the real estate game, you know, it it does. But I'm just saying, in my opinion, and in opinions of people that I have spoken with, that the new home developments, the lots are too small. But if you don't have a choice of where you, you gotta buy a house, you don't have to, but you know, people's mindset. Cause we got plenty of apartments going up, but in their mindset, you know, this is the only house and and I I know I had, this doesn't relate to the yard size, but I know I had one person saying, you know, they they moved here from another state and they bought, they were um middle aged. And they bought a two-story house with lots of steps. It was the only house that was available, so, you know, of course, this year they turned around, they were there a year, turned around, sold it, so. Because they asked right after they bought it, why did I buy this house with all these steps? Because it was the only one that was available in the area that they wanted to be, so. So I I don't wanna get off on the real estate kick and all that stuff. I'm just saying that I think if the lot sizes come down, then I think, if this is changing the lot sizes from what the existing codes are now, then I think they need to stay at the size they are now.
I think your example of them buying that house makes my point. I think this gives us the ability to build more houses, to give people more options. That's the benefit of density in a desirable area and city where people wanna be, and I I think this is a good solution to that problem. But that's why I'm, I I disagree with you on this.
I'm always amazed at how many people think that the city builds houses. And, you know, there's this this idea that we control growth. When we can control zoning and we can control the ordinances around the regulations and 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 the zoning ordinances and the. And the size of the lot.
And things like that, we do control that.
It, we we do.
Supposed to.
We we do, but the market dictates what is going to sell and what is not, is go, in 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 not going to to sell.
Being built, they don't have any choice. But anyway, okay.
They they've got the option to move somewhere else then, don't they?
I'm sorry?
They've got the option to move somewhere else then, don't they?
Another city or?
Yeah, another city, or move out in the country.
Anybody does.
Well, what they're after, for the most part, I think, is an urban living style or an or an area where they have a smaller lot, a smaller house. And I don't know that it 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 excludes the size of the house on a smaller lot. We've talked about this historic district, I mean, you know, many of the homes down there are on lots anywhere from seven point five to ten thousand square feet, and some of those are sizable homes. So I don't know that it that it makes any difference what the lot size is, uh, I think it's the market that dictates dictates that. Do you wanna make an amendment? Offer an amendment?
Well, uh, yeah, I will, I I don't feel like I'm gonna get that.
Well, could I just interject? I will say that, um, so traditional neighborhood combines R five and R seven five. So it took the lower of the two, five thousand square feet as the minimum. Same for tradici-, or for suburban neighborhood. It combines R ten, R twelve and R fifteen, so it is that minimum ten thousand. Now, it was nine and we increased that to ten based on feedback that we got. Um, so the way it's written right now, if you wanted to increase those lot sizes, we would have to take another look at the the zoning map and conversion table because we can't take away property rights, so we can't, we can't combine those anymore. So it's a bigger, I just wanna point out, it's a much bigger, when you asked earlier, would this mess up anything else? This is a much bigger amendment than just a a lot size.
And to your, to your point, minimum lot sizes just means that's the minimum lot size. If the market, if buyers are asking for a different product or a different size lot, a builder can build.
That's correct, we do not have maximum lot sizes.
So that's, I understand what you're saying, Judy, I I'm sympathetic to that, but my understanding, what I hear from people, what I've read, you know, market, like this is what, that is what buyers are asking for, is is a smaller lot size. What we're seeing here and and even elsewhere. And again, that kind of to what Lee is talking about, that scarcity, what we're facing, the reason why people have felt that franticness over the last few years, there's some, some kind of one-off circumstances that have played into that for one thing, by my understanding, but also be, just because of the scarcity and a larger lot size, requiring a larger lot size only makes that problem worse, potentially.
Yeah, and I remember hearing on the news or something a couple of years ago or something, that they were going to the smaller lots and the condominiums in the townhome. This is all part of climate change, climate woman, yeah.
No.
That was part of it, so, but in general speaking, everything is related to climate change.
All right, would you like others?
No, okay, we're good.
No, I was gonna say, Judy, I agree with you one hundred percent on the lot size. I mean, my house sits on eight acres, so I, you know, I want I want some room. But District Two residents, unfortunately, they they just wanna be in the position to buy a house. So they don't care if the house is, you know, a quarter of acre or a half acre. So, um, I would just have to disagree with you unfortunately on on that side.
I have a question about something in the text.
Let let me finish real quick with with councilman, uh, councilwoman, um, Albert, do you wish to offer an amendment?
No, I'm I'm fine, she said there's too many changes that have to be made in the grouping of the different subdivisions, et cetera.
Okay, Councilman Bettis.
On page twenty four, under section A, under four. It's talking about the planning commission, once a member is physically present at a P C meeting, any subsequent failure to vote will be recorded as an affirmative vote unless the member has recused himself or herself, or has been excused in accordance with the paragraph below. Has that always been that way?
I believe so.
Really?
I'd have to look, to be honest.
You count it as a yes if you don't vote?
Typically, they have. I don't know that we've ever enforced it.
That's what I thought, what I read.
Uh, twenty four.
Right in the middle of the page.
Yeah, I'm trying to look at our current code, I I, it is written that way.
I think unless you accuse yourself, it is without, unless you accuse yourself, your presence is an affirmative vote.
Seems odd. Why wouldn't it be assumed to be a negative vote?
It could be, I guess, I don't know.
You should've said yes from out of.
I guess if you disagree, you don't know.
If you knew that you were gonna be a confirmed yes, if you didn't vote, it it looks like you would just go ahead and vote.
I I believe this came up recently, it would need to.
Honestly, I'm not certain, but I'm happy to look into it and bring it back as an amendment, if it doesn't match our current code.
An odd thing when I read it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, others, bringing up anything in regards to or amended ordinance number thirty one dash twenty twenty three?
I have a request for staff. Where we, where there's lots of mention of building heights and in 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 all areas of the city. I believe the building heights are, they're almost arbitrary, there, there's no rhyme or reason as to why we'll allow a certain height and then allow so much leeway given to staff. I'm gonna talk in general terms because I don't know the specifics, but what I could find out is you have an elevation at Main and Point Set and then a elevation on Moore Street. And the information I found was that there's a forty to fifty foot difference in elevation between Moore and Main. So, why shouldn't there be a formula to determine, if we're trying to make our skyline that 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 looks similar? You can always build shorter, but if you wanna go up, why would you not say if it's a thousand feet at Main and Point Set? And then you drop down, you you come, you're coming this way and let's say elevation changes twenty five feet. Why don't you, why aren't we able to add that to the sixty, what is our, down to sixty feet?
Sixty.
So why would you not start with a building height of, maximum height of eighty five feet? Because when you look at a cross-section, elevations are gonna be the same. Does that make sense?
Yeah, actually, uh, the airport in Byron Zone does something similar there, if you go through their appeals process. They base everything off of a a mean sea level, so if you build in a tower, if it's at, it can't be over that that sea level height, and and that's, you get the same effect, you know.
Because if as time goes on and the Moore Street in south develops, people wanna see what down, people want views, of course. So, if the city builds a five-story building, uh, or parking garage just across Moore Street, there's no way for this building on Moore to get up and look over unless you, unless you're given the ability to add that back to that building height total. I'd like to see staff, see if they could come up with something, some kind of formula that we could use instead of just saying, these are the numbers, because we don't, we we don't live on flat ground here. It's all downhill.
I understand that, we'd be happy to look at it in more detail. A lot of it is ease of enforcement, you know, right now we can look at a building plan and see the height. Um, but if if we need topographic surveys within a certain amount of distance, we don't have good data right now. So they would be responsible for doing that survey, so it's an added cost to them as well.
Well, we do, I was able to find that information and you can get handheld devices that say, this is the the level above sea level you're standing at right now for free on your phone. So, Mr. Irwin will take a look at that.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Second and final reading of amended ordinance thirty one dash twenty twenty three, we have one amendment to that that is passed. Um, further discussion in regards to ordinance thirty one dash twenty twenty three.
I'll say quick quickly, I feel like we're in a a place where it's a workable tool to to get implemented. I appreciate the conversation had with Ms. Potter, uh, earlier. And, um, I know we have other things we're gonna be discussing, looking at. I think that merits, you know, the historical, uh, that was was referenced, I think that merits being part of that conversation. And appreciate the input in that regard.
Others, comments?
My only comment is that I'm sure this is a great document, but we're biting off too much of a bite at one time. It should be done in pieces.
Others?
I just wanna reiterate, thank you staff and everyone that worked on this. I mean, this is a tough thing to to tackle and, um, I just, I'm kinda excited to see how the projects will kinda shake out and what amendments will come. Um, that's the exciting part, cause progress is needed.
And I think as we're a growing city, it's necessary, I mean, it seems like that zoning would just be common sense and something that you could work out amongst neighbors or yourselves. But it it shows you just based on the debates we've had on four or five issues tonight, why we need something like this that that people coming to the city, people living in the city, people on staff, people that are developing within the city, they can understand that that we have a standard, that they can understand what we're, what we're trying to accomplish here and 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 so we can all get along and we can all make progress together. So I'm looking forward to this living document that is the U D O and and having further discussions on chain link fences and heights of buildings and lot sizes. And I think there's a lot more good things that we will have an opportunity to talk about down the road and and, uh, but but again, thank you so much for all your hard work and for bringing everybody together and and for putting something down here, and I know what Riley's saying too, it is a lot. And it is a lot for us to digest, but it is, um, it is a good starting place and and something I look forward to working with staff on.
Well, I appreciate y'all's input along the way too, it's been a, it's been a big project for staff, stakeholders and board members, so I appreciate y'all's diligence and thorough review and debate.
The thing that that I would say is that in my opinion, representing District One, is that any ordinances whether it's, has to do with parking or whether it has to do with building, is that it needs to be based on Greer's needs. And the thing that I, there's so many, there's so much stuff that I found in this document that our staff didn't put together, that it it can't, came from people we hired. And it, just to remind you, I think we paid over two hundred thousand dollars. They need, they owe us money back, I really believe that, and, um, anyway, but, you know, every time that I've talked with staff, that they, they've been very helpful and we've worked through things. And I understand, I'm in agreement with Riley, that i- i- if we have something like this come before us again, I would recommend that we don't undertake a three hundred-page document that's so important at one time that we take it in sections.
The last one served us well for twenty five years, so if you're here in twenty five years, you can recommend that to the future council.
That's exactly right, and and anyway, we, it need, e- every document needs to reflect Greer. Not, I I don't like answers back from consultants that say, well, this, basically, they say, this is what everybody else is doing.
Yeah, I agree. So let me, let me wrap this up as we take a, as we take a vote here, this is, um, to echo what you have heard tonight, thank you to our staff, thank you to our, um, our councilman. Thank you for being a part of this process as well. Um, what you have seen and what you have heard tonight is local government at its very best, at its very best. Um, and not everybody agrees with what we have have come up with, and there are gonna be folks that leave here tonight and and are 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 not going to appreciate, uh, the process as much as others will. Uh, but this is, this is what government is about, it's about give and take and it's about having different opinions and, um, figuring out what is best for the constituency you served. And you heard it tonight, you heard District Six and in in the, and uh, you know, what what that reflects and District One and what that reflects and 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 District Two and their needs, and you heard that. Um, and, um, this is, thi- this is, this is a process. And, um, you know, we're gonna, as you heard, we're gonna, we'll probably be changing things, uh, you know, in the next, uh, next several months, or at least we will have the opportunity to do that. And, you know, while we do look for advice to our staff, um, we also are gonna look to this council to to bring new ideas and to and to bring things to them for us to to consider as a body. and to, and to bring things to them for us to, to consider as a body. Because what we know is that, that this document was created to serve us well and to serve us for, for a long period of time. But we're not gonna think of everything. We can't possibly include everything. I heard somebody say the other day, and, 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 and I, I saw it in the paper not long ago, there hasn't been a high school built in South Carolina in the last five years that has lockers in it. Things change. Things change. And, you know, maybe it's you just don't have lockers anymore cuz you don't need them. So, you know, things are gonna, things are gonna come up and, uh, that's, that's gonna be the way it is. Last call, final reading of ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty-two-three. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, we have the second and final reading of ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty-two-three, an ordinance to replace the City of Greer official zoning map with a new official zoning map consistent with the City of Greer Unified Development Ordinance of even date herein. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion. Comments? Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel will move to new business. First reading of ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty-two-three. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property or properties owned by True North Properties LLC located at one-oh-one Green Leaf Drive and one-oh-three Woodhaven Drive from R twelve to R seven-point-five. Ms. Stahl?
This is, uh, docket number RZ twenty-three zero-nine. This is a rezoning for two parcels. The addresses are one-oh-one Green Leaf Drive and one-oh-three Woodhaven Drive. The existing zoning for both parcels is R twelve, single-family residential, and the request is to rezone to R seven-five, single-family residential.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? You available for questions? If necessary, we will, uh, ask you to come forward. For the purpose of discussion, ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty-two-three, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion. Questions?
Now does, since we just adopted the UDO, what does, does, is all this kind of?
It will become traditional neighborhood, um, which is a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet.
So why, why are we doing the rezoning?
So, um, he plans to split the lots into three and develop either single-family homes or duplexes.
But does that, does that require a rezoning at this point? Like going forward under the UDO, does that require a rezoning? Or is that something that has to come before council now? Or just because it's in that, in the new area, does that mean?
It would, um, because he was interested in doing duplexes. Those are allowed by right in traditional neighborhood and suburban neighborhood, which would be the R twelve would become. It would require a special exception. So for this particular location, it made sense to move to the traditional neighborhood or R seven-five. The green that you see is, um, RM one, so it's the multifamily. And then the, uh, orange is R twelve, which is single-family. So it's more of a transitional piece, if you will.
Thank you.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Second item before us is the first reading of ordinance number thirty-four dash twenty-two-three, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Nicholas Jordan located at four-oh-eight East Point Set Street from RM one to C two. Ms. Stahl?
This is also a rezoning. The location is four-oh-eight East Point Set Street. Existing zoning is RM one multifamily residential and the request is to rezone to C two commercial. Here's the aerial of the parcel. Here is the current zoning map. The, uh, parcel in question is in the center. It is zoned RM one. The red surrounding is RM, uh, excuse me, C two commercial. Here is the future land use map. The red is downtown living. The yellow below it is traditional neighborhood and the horizontal red line is neighborhood corridor. Here is, uh, the photo of existing conditions of the site. Actually, this house here was demoed in the last week, so now it's a vacant site. Uh, once again, the request is to rezone to C two commercial. The surrounding zoning and land uses are C two residential to the north and east. There is railroad right of way to the south and C two commercial to the rest west. Staff recommends approval and Planning Commission also recommended approval.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you. Are you available for questions? Okay, thank you. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive ordinance number thirty-four dash twenty-two-three.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion. Questions?
Just to expand the grocery store basically, or parking, or combination?
It is, yes.
Gotcha. They're, they're running a busy business there. Every time I come by there, that parking lot is packed and people are trying not to hit each other and coming in and out. So congratulations. Keep doing what you're doing.
Others? Further discussion?
Now, there is, is that, is there any more residential lots in that little triangle? I guess there's one more. Has everything converted to-
Four-twelve is residential. I believe, uh, and four-fourteen is still being used as residential.
Oh, that's, the red is the future land use.
But, um, oh yeah, forgive me. Did you wanna see future land use or zoning?
No, I'm just-
Um, they, they're zoned C two, but they're still being used as residential.
Oh, but, but they're zoned C two, yeah, that's what I was meaning, so.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Item three is a bid summary for the H.R. Turner Field Improvement. In effort to increase the recreational offerings for the citizens of the City of Greer, we are proposing a total renovation of the Turner Park and will build a new baseball field, playground area, new restroom and additional parking at the site. Designs for the project have been approved and are available after facilitating a competitive bidding process that resulted in three formal bids. Contractor chosen to perform the work is Sexton Design and Developments from Greenville, South Carolina. John Googlehauer joins us for this discussion. Floor's yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, good evening, counsel. As Mayor stated, this is, uh, the opportunity for us to render more offerings for the citizens of Greer for a new baseball field at, uh, current Turner location, Turner Park location. This has been, we put together for this project, a, a, a good group effort in putting together the scope. It was put out to bid. The competitive bids were received and Sexton, uh, design has won, there's the low bid in this particular instance. And, um, they're proposing to do it for one million, seven-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars and we're asking council to approve, to proceed.
With that then, counsel, uh, for the purpose of further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion.
What's the timeframe to begin the project and even for completion if we do it?
Yes, sir. The beginning of it would be, be as quickly as possible. First reconstruction they wanna do in December eighteenth, if we can get this moved forward. They're looking at the substantial completion of this about April twenty-seventh. I mean, we put a, um, time limit on them with some penalties, minor penalties, but something, uh, to get this project moving and completed.
How large is the field gonna be? Do we know?
Sir?
What's, how large is the field? Is it gonna?
As far as-
Hundred and eighty feet, two-hundred feet? I mean, what kinda, is it, is it just specifically to replace kind of the softball activities and T-ball on the Victor Park?
It is to take place at Victor Park, that's correct. And a lot of, in fact, a lot of the equipment and stuff where the lighting, for, for instance, is gonna come from Victor and some of the shade structures and so forth. There's a whole lot more parking included in this, uh, so it's not just the field. In fact, we're gonna pick up about a hundred and thirty-one spots, parking spaces, so. That, there's also a little area for a playground, uh, so it's not, it's more than just the field. It's gonna upgrade that location in a number of ways.
Is it basically the same layout that they had been, been presented?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, basically down in that lower field is where it's gonna go. And, and like I said, it'll come up into the upper portion where some impact up there will be where the new playground would be. And it's not a, a large playground by any stretch, but it's, it's something.
I think at one point, uh, Big Turner, you know, I call it Big Turner. When I grew up, you know, you had Little Turner, which was still up top, and then you had the Big Turner that was down below. And I think there's some misunderstanding that that was some, that's always been like an open field. It wasn't. It was a baseball field, uh, a few years back. And then, you know, through the years, I guess-
Turned into a field?
We realigned it or did something and then we turned it into a field because there, there may not have been, you know, as, as great of a need as we have right now. But there is a serious need at this point. Obviously with this field going away, I got a call today and a gentleman was telling me about his daughter's softball team that played out at Victor and how memorable that field was to them and just how they were, you know, devastated that it was going away. And, uh, but, you know, he kinda reassured them that this, this field was gonna be coming online soon and, you know, it was gonna be an even nicer facility. He was just kinda bragging on the way that the city had taken care of the field and groomed it and it, it was just a real special and unique place to them. And so I, I look forward to this project being like that. But I also wanna, uh, say too, that I appreciate, uh, the folks that showed up and that spoke about the need for the city to have, you know, some adult programming and activities and open space and different things like that. And we're sensitive to that and we're actively trying to pursue those opportunities and to look for those. And we are, we are well aware that we are behind as far as fields are concerned, as far as activity centers are concerned, as, as far as our recreational offerings are concerned at this point. And so I just wanted to, you know, to state that publicly, that we're trying to, we're trying to get that up to speed right now. And this is, this is just one piece to that puzzle.
And I appreciate you saying that because, uh, you said it earlier, what there's, there are multiple plans in play. This is just one piece of that puzzle.
She had some very good points that she made in her presentation.
Yeah, what's that, ma'am?
The lady that spoke.
Yes.
Mr. Buskey, yeah.
She had some very good points.
Yeah, I, 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 I wanna echo those. I, I appreciate the time that you spent coming in tonight and addressing counsel. There, there are a lot of moving targets out there and you mentioned a couple of them. And, um, we are, uh, acutely aware of, of addressing the recreation needs of a very fast-growing city. And, and, um, you know, one of the things that, that we want to do is, is keep as many of these parks in, um, neighborhoods, uh, like, like yours. We think it builds community. And, um, it's a known fact that, that if you're in walking distance of a, uh, community park, that it, it raises property values and, and a lot of other things. And so, uh, while there are, are, uh, questions as to where people are parked, are gonna park and how they're gonna drive and all those other things, we'll, we'll be working through that. And, uh, I encourage you to, uh, to, uh, to, to reach out to our, uh, our Recreation Department. I know the folks over there would be glad to, uh, get any input that you might have. And, uh, thank you for your appearance tonight. Yes, with that, uh, anybody else?
I appreciate even the, some of the practical, you know, things like a bottle filling station, you know, suggestions that way. Is that, do we still have the flexibility to look at that kinda thing or is that included?
There's actually another restroom going in and there will be water fountain and, and, and I've, I've taken note as well to some of these comments, like the speed bumps, for instance. That's not part of this plan, but it, it should be something considered and I think we'll take that back. That was a good, uh, a good call to, to bring that to our, I know that we do that internally, so that's something that we can do beyond the scope of this.
Shade structure was mentioned. Is there a shade structure?
There is. We're gonna be moving actually the shade structure from Victor over into this park. Yes, sir.
Great.
Others?
Yeah, I just wanna echo, thank you for the suggestions and, uh, even bringing up diversity and women's sports programming and, and things of that nature. But I'll tell you, um, Lee, I, I think we're a little behind because we got folks coming from other communities using our facilities. I was at the basketball courts in Sunnyside and asked the kids, I was like, hey, where y'all from? Where you live, right up the street? I was like, no, we came from Dunkin'. I was like, wow.
All you can do is sit out in the parking lot of kids' planet and look at the buses that come in from all over.
It's usually packed every day.
Yeah.
Yep.
Others? Final thoughts? Does require action. I've got a motion and a second at this point. Final thoughts? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, we have no items listed for executive session. Stand adjourned.